I hereby call the Brockton School Committee for Tuesday, February 7th, in the year 2023, at being timed seven, a little after seven o'clock, to order if we could please stand and salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to read the following into the record. Welcome to an open meeting of the school committee. The agenda tonight will be discussed. Please note the hearing of visitors is included. If you have a statement or questions, please give your name to the secretary. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast Channel 98, and also on 1071 HD version, and also online via the following link, which is www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. We have established, well, we have to call the role to establish a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan?
Here.
Mrs. Ayers?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Ms. Azak?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
And I'm here as well. We've established a quorum. I would, before we go into the full agenda, I'd like to introduce, we did this last night at the school, at the city council, I'd like to introduce Suzanne McCormick, who is my newest member to the mayor's team. Suzanne is communications director. Remember Davis and Perez, you used to work for us and left to go back to the Boston Red Sox. Suzanne is a Brockton High grad, she was in the Red Building, and her mother served on the school committee as well. So I just wanted Suzanne to come here tonight. Suzanne, if you don't mind, come to the podium real quickly, just to say hello like you did last night, and whatever else you want to say to the school committee. Sure.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. I'm so happy to be here. I'm having such a great time working for the mayor, and if you need anything, just give a call to the office, any communications-related items, happy to help, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I will, I will tell you, Suzanne comes from a really wonderful professional background in terms of communication, and it came true today, as we know, we had the first in the history of Brockton, ten alarm fire here in the city of Brockton with Brockton Hospital, Siggi Healthcare. I want to just let you know, first of all, no one was injured, thank God. That's the biggest thing, no one was injured. Chief Brian Ideli led an unbelievable department. A hundred and sixty-five patients were transported to many, many, many hospitals, including Cape Cod Hospital, Falmouth Hospital, all the Boston hospitals, Good Sam, Morton. We had fire apparatus from Boston and Brookline, Hyannis. It was a scary situation. The hospital is offline, the main Brockton Hospital is closed indefinitely, but I will tell you that the other outlying buildings, the Cancer Center, the School of Nursing is still operational as of tomorrow, but I just want to applaud everybody from BIMA to MIMA to the state police, Governor Healy, Lieutenant Governor called me, Senator Markey called me, and the biggest concern, again, was because state police and Brockton police had to close off access for ambulance transportation. Again, we were going to have an impact on transportation for the schools, and I want to thank you, Superintendent. We didn't have any type of really negative impact on that, and again, I know the school committee was made aware, thanks to your efforts as well, Mike, but, you know, we will continue to work with the Brockton Hospital. A lot of folks were transported over to our other acute hospital, Good Samaritan Medical Center, the old Cottle-Cushing. So, again, just wanted to give you an update on that, but the main branch of the Brockton Hospital is currently closed, and it will be for some time, so just want to share that. We will go into, to agenda number two, which is the hearing of visitors, and I believe Mrs. Campbell said there are no visitors signed in? That's accurate? So we can, we can move on to agenda three, which is consent agenda, and it's really chock-full, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, and J. I would respectfully ask if there's any school committee members that would like to take anything out of order, or individually, or if you'd like to take them collectively at this time, what is the will of the school committee?
Motion to accept consent agenda.
So motion, collectively?
Collectively.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Sullivan to take items A through J collectively. Is there a second?
Second.
Second was made by Ms. Azak. Before we, we actually do the vote, let me just read into the minutes. A is the approval of the minutes, January 24, 2023, facilities, usage, and planning subcommittee meeting. B would be the approval of the minutes for January 17, 2023, regular school committee meeting. C is the approval of the minutes for January 3, 2023, organizational school committee meeting. D is the approval of the minutes for December 20, in the year 2022, regular school committee meeting. E is the approval of the minutes, December 13, 2022, athletic, arts, music, extracurricular subcommittee meeting. F is the approval of the minutes, August 30, 2022, facilities, usage, and planning subcommittee meeting. G is the approval of the Jean Gaudere Memorial Scholarship. H is the approval of the Robert G Moran Memorial Scholarship. I is request for authorization to submit proposals and expenditures as following. FY 2023 Department of Energy DOE renewal American schools grants in the amount of $6,642,941. FY 2023 Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Center for District and School Partnership in the amount of $300,000 even. FY 2023, the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Center for Instructional Support in the amount of $100,000 even. FY 2023, increased allocation to support the existing Innovation Pathway Implementation and Support Grants in the amount of $75,000 even. And finally, FY 2023, the State Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Mass Farming, Reinforcements Educational, and Student Health, which is F-R-E-S-H, fresh, in the amount of $50,000 even. J is the acceptance of human resources notifications, appointments, certified personnel, appointments non-certified, and lastly, personnel actions, leaves of absences, resignations, and retirements. We have a motion on the floor, properly seconded. I'll read the roll. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we pass unanimously. Also, I was remiss, we want to again congratulate one of our colleagues, Cynthia Rivas-Mendez, and the birth of her child. We want to, we want to wish her all the happiness and health, and I know Mr. Homer is actually away out of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, on a work-related trip. At this time, we'll go on to agenda four, which is the report of the superintendent of schools, Mike Thomas. Mike, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor. We're going to bring up Abby, student representative, who I referred to last time as Ellen, who was last year's representative. So Abby, I apologize to you for that.
Abby, he's getting a little old and a little forgetful, so don't take it the wrong way.
Basketball's gone. So, can you, Abby, give us an update on what's going on at Brockton High School?
Yes, Abby is here today. Oh, hold on. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to start with some fine arts updates. This past weekend, we had our Feb Fest, our annual student-directed small-scale plays that creates a large engagement in our drama department. And our BHS Harmonics group won second place at the Central Massachusetts Show Choir Competition over the weekend. They took home the silver medal for their performance, and Aaron Dubuson won Outstanding Performer Award for the group. Many of our students were chosen for the Scholastic Art Awards. Thousands of artworks submitted by students all over the state were submitted. Seventeen of our students won a total of four gold keys, nine silver keys, and six honorable mentions, the names pictured in red. Eight of our students were chosen for UMass Dartmouth's College of Visual and Performing Arts Emerging Young Artists of 2023. Winners are, names are pictured in pink. We've had a lot of awareness announcements over the last couple of weeks, starting with Black History Month. We've had announcements each day celebrating Black History Month from Mr. G, many of Brockton High students, and a song sung by Noah Gogeti and San Similin. We had peer mediation come for the week of the 23rd to the 27th. Our peer mediators gave daily announcements, teaching about the program, how to get a mediation, and the advantages of the program. And this week is School Counseling Week, where we celebrate our guidance counselors for their help that they give the students at BHS. Us students would like to send a special thank you to the guidance department for their support in our academic achievement, social-emotional development, and our planning for our futures. And last, we have athletics. We had teacher appreciation games hosted by our girls and boys' basketball teams. Boys had two second-place finishes at the state coaches' invite. Over the weekend, Lucas Andrade jumped six feet in the high jump, and Christian Paul jumped 21.6 in the long jump. Both hit the qualifying standard for the New Balance Nationals in March. And finally, our boys' track, freshmen and sophomores, won the team championship, and varsity won sixth with many of the season's best performances, with 4x200 running a national qualifying time. That is all.
Thank you, Abby, for the update. As we continue to get closer to vacation and senior year is flying by, so it's amazing how fast it goes, but thank you for the update. The meeting in March, we also have our representative from Champion will join us again for updates, and we also, the following meeting in March, the second meeting, we'll have an update from a student at the Promise School and the Huntington School as well, so, but it's always great to have the student reps with us, so thank you. Next, I'm going to bring up the head of Wellness, Health and Wellness Department, Dennis Genich, who's with us. He's going to present, and we need a vote on a BPS policy ADF. It's related to wellness, so Dennis, thanks for being with us.
Thanks.
Do you have a PowerPoint or?
Nope. Just, I'll be as quick as I can here. I'm here tonight to seek the school committee's approval and endorsement of our local wellness policy. We are required by the state to have a written wellness policy and revisit and update this policy every three years. So once it's approved by our school committee, it will be available on our website so that everyone in our community can take a look at it. The report documents that we are in compliance with program requirements and state standards. This cycle, they specifically asked for districts to report on food service operation and the nutrition environment, so thank you especially to Tom Burke, our district manager of Chartwells, and Shayna Shields, who is our resident dietitian, for providing all the updated information regarding food service operation in the Brockton Public Schools. They did ask for specific information regarding nutrition, education in the Brockton Public Schools, and I worked closely with not only our health teaching staff, but Stephanie DeLebrer from UMass Extension Nutrition, in conjunction with our primary curriculum, which is HealthSmart. All of our curriculum that has to do with health and nutrition is aligned with our state frameworks and the state health education frameworks and skills-based education that gives our students the skills for making healthy choices that will affect their lifelong decisions. We also were required to report on physical activity and physical education, so thank you to Nick Lee, the director of physical education K-12, and Kevin Caro, the athletic director at Brockton High School, for providing all of the updated information regarding physical education curriculum and physical activity in Brockton. We received an update from our nursing services section, from Linda Cahill, the director of the nurses, so thank you very much to Linda. As part of our participation in the Healthy Schools Program and the Healthy Schools Grant, we were allowed to apply to a program that was going to give us a mentor to kind of guide us through this program, because it's only a triannual update, and the requirements of the update will change every three years. So we were, luckily, we were assigned to Nicole Good, who's a school wellness specialist for the Office of Food and Nutrition at DESI, and she was fantastic. So when we had these individual subcommittees and we completed a section of the report, we submitted that to Nicole, she reviewed that with me, and she made sure that we were on track, and at the end of the process, she gave us her full endorsement of our new wellness policy. There are three people that I'd like to recognize. I want to make sure that I mention, thank you especially to a Brockton High School parent, Dana Marchant, who reached out to me during this process regarding our health curriculum at Brockton High School, and Dana and I had a chance to meet and talk. I was able to share the health curriculum with her, and she shared some perspective on not only her child's experience at Brockton High School, but a view from the eyes of a parent. So thanks to Dana, and I look forward to further collaboration with Dana and all of our parents. I want to recognize the Health and Wellness Staff K-12. During the past four years, I've had the privilege to work alongside the health teachers in the Brockton Public Schools. The curriculum they teach is more important now than ever, and they promote the healthy growth and development of our students. To all of our health teachers, your hard work is very much appreciated, so thank you to all of the Health and Wellness Staff K-12 for all the work you do. And finally, thank you very much to Donna Migdale. Donna took our finished product and edited it to make sure it fit the format of our official policy documents. Not sure what I'd do without Donna, so thank you very much, Donna. So I'd like to ask the school committee, I know you all have a copy of that, if you can give this new wellness policy your approval. We actually include our past wellness policy, and this will be our practice going forward. Anything that is done at the end of that three-year cycle will remain as an addendum so that all of the hard work that's put into these documents doesn't go unrecognized and stays on record as we move forward. So when we revisit this in three years, if we have a different set of requirements, this report will remain in the addendum, so we can always go back and refer to it as needed.
Members of the school committee, any questions relative to this matter? Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you for the presentation. So compared to the policy ADF that was approved in 2021?
Yes.
I mean, you can tell, after reviewing this over the weekend, that a lot of time was put into this, and this is what we need, because a lot of our policies are, I don't want to use the word vague, but this really spells everything out, and it really breaks everything down to help us understand and help parents and students understand when it comes to things that they need, especially, so I just wanted to commend you on the work that was put into this.
Thanks.
Compared to looking at the policy from 2021, it just, I think, three or four pages, where this was very lengthy, and I remember, you know, I reviewed it over the weekend, and I was just impressed with the amount of time that was put in there. And, you know, thank you to Donna Migdale, because I'm working with her on some of the policies that we're going to be meeting on that were also approved and are going to be updated. So it's a lot of time that's put into it that people don't realize, but thank you.
Thank you. She's great. And everybody that worked on this, all of these subcommittees were fantastic. We now have a full wellness committee that will be meeting four times a year. We used our four meetings this year to complete this document, but we do have, there's one thing I want to mention to the committee. In March, the Health and Wellness Department, in collaboration with Gabby Sullivan, who's the grants manager from High Point, the Brockton Area Prevention Collaborative, and Patrick St. Martin, the Prevention Service Program Coordinator from Bay State Community Service, will be delivering a live virtual event, informational presentation on vaping and the dangers of vaping and how to speak to your children about vaping, that will be made available via link to all BPS families and staff, anyone in the community that would like to view it. This will be a live, about 45-minute presentation that will be recorded, so it will occur live for all the families that can attend it live, and they'll have an opportunity to ask questions in the chat during that night, but it will be recorded and made available to all families, staff, and the community. So if anyone misses the presentation, they'll be able to view it at a later time for the rest of the school year, for the rest of the year 2023. So great things like this come out of this kind of work, and it's great to collaborate with all the people that we get to work on these subcommittees with and all of our local resources. So it's a nice exercise for us to go through.
Mrs. Ayers, please. I'm sorry, Ms. Azak, will you, I'll say, Mrs. Ayers, please.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Sorry. This doesn't seem to be, there you go. To Ms. Azak's point, the policy that you put together this year is far more robust than what we had before. So would you be able to tell us a little bit, is there any heavy lifting that we have to do now that we weren't doing previously that we need to prepare for, or is everything kind of rolling right along?
Sure. I mean, we're, everything is on track, and everything that you'll read about in these, in this document, is happening now, so it's just a way for us to quantify everything that's happening. And the wellness policy that came before it, it was really well done, and that, that's what was asked for, and I think just, you know, the game has been upped a little bit, and the standards are going up a little bit. So as that happens, I'm sure the next one we see will be a little more comprehensive and may have some other areas that they want to focus on, but everything is certainly underway, and this is all the things that we are doing now. There's always room for us to continue to improve, and, you know, in food service, sometimes the regulations will change, sometimes the requirements will change, but everything that you see here is all of our updated and current information is currently being done in the Brockton Public Schools. You bet.
Any additional questions on this? If there are none, I would entertain a motion to accept the policy as stated.
Motion to accept the policy as stated?
Second.
The mic was off. Sorry. Motion to accept the new wellness policy as presented tonight?
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Ayers. I'll read the roll. Mr. Sullivan?
Accept.
And Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I say yes as well, a passage unanimous. Thank you very much. Good evening. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Dennis. Next is, I want to go over our new proposed DESI MOU, which has been reduced from, we had a two-year MOU with them. When I first became superintendent and I asked for their partnership, because the work is going so well, they've updated the MOU, which is a lot smaller, and it's also 11 months long, so it would start, if it went signed by me, it'd start, you know, back on December 1st, because pretty much the work has already been going on from the team across the district that are in place, and because they've seen that progress with the new organizational structure at Central and the work that the teachers are doing in the classrooms, they really have, you know, made the MOU a lot smaller, and of things that were already focused on, so, and it will expire on November 1st of 2023 of this year. So just some highlights, so, so we will, Brockton Public Schools will take ambitious steps to ensure that all students with disabilities have the least restrictive environment to demonstrate improved academic outcomes, so it, again, it mentions in here in developing pre-K programs, so they're more available for our pre-K students, all pre-K students, and make sure they're inclusive and obviously include students with disabilities, and obviously reducing our rate from students in sub-separate classrooms to be more in inclusion in regular ed classrooms. So that is, that is the first one here. Second is Brockton Public Schools will take steps to ensure that the English-language learners are effectively integrated into general education classrooms. That is, as you know, has been doing, we started this year with our new launch program, so that's happening, and they've been very pleased with that. So they need to be in general education classrooms more, have access to the sports they need in order to demonstrate improved academic outcomes. This will include a task force that will use the DESE Blueprint for English Language Learner Success as a mechanism for comprehensive program evaluation, and also they will keep examining current student integration practices. So again, it's the inclusion of our English-language learners into regular ed a lot quickly, more quickly than we've done it in the past, in that the launch program so far has been a successful model, and they'll continue to watch that. Next is the Brockton Public Schools will take steps to increase the four-year graduation rate of students with disabilities with progress towards the state rate, so they want all students to graduate within four years when they reach the ninth grade. This may be being looked at at the state level because of COVID, but right now, they do follow and pretty much evaluate us on whether students graduate within four years, all students, but they do focus on students with disabilities. So the state rate of students with disabilities graduating with, in four years, is 76%, and we're currently at 50%. So that, we need to start to improve that. They don't give us a number where we should be, but they want us closer to the state Next is Brockton Public Schools will take steps to improve its implementation of district's education evaluation system. This year, we went way up to, we completed 92.76% of everybody being evaluated. They want 100%. This one, we have a little debate going back and forth, Ms. Woldner and I, because there's a lot of educators, I think we would be closer to 100%, but there's a lot of educators last year that were out on either medical leaves or other leaves, and they were not evaluated, because you have to be here for a certain amount of time to be evaluated. Unfortunately, they were counted against us, even though they weren't here enough time to be able to be evaluated, so that's kind of a, they really haven't got back to us on an answer on how to deal with that, but.
But then, if we have to be really careful how we code.
Yeah.
We're questioning whether or not we have been coded.
Right.
We'll do our part, so we have to.
Yeah, so that's got to be, some of the people that were coded wrong in our system caused us to go down to that 90, actually, we were up to 92% from previous, but to not get us to that 100%, we have to, there's some people that were coded wrong through Infineon Campus Immunis, and then there was also some people that were out, and we couldn't evaluate because of medical reasons and just how many days they were out, so, so we're going to get some more clarification on that, but they want to see us, obviously, at 100% for all educators that are up for, are up for evaluation, but a lot better, I think, I don't know, five years ago, it was around 60%. I don't have the exact number, but the improvement's been, been a lot, obviously, as you know, that is something that was throughout the district review. And finally, the next one is kind of, you know, I'm glad they put it in, because we're already doing it. As you know, you voted and approved on a new curriculum for ELA in K-5, so they want the school district to continue to implement strategies to ensure a shared understanding of high-quality curriculum instruction and shared best practices. So we're in the process now, there's a task force together to select a new ELA curriculum for grades nine to 12. That's something that DESI is focused on, it's something we're focused on, so there's a team district, Dr. Connors is the chair of, of educators from all of our high schools, not just Brockton High, and we're going to have a uniformed nine-through-12 ELA curriculum that is across all schools, whether you go to Promise, Champion, Brockton High, Edison, or Huntington. It will be a uniform curriculum, especially in the required classes, freshman English, sophomore English, junior English. The electives have a little bit more leeway when you get up into junior and senior year, when you have ELA electives, and you can be, then it's selected readings and those things, so part of this task force is to have, select a new curriculum pretty much by probably next November, and then start to implement and put something in place by January. That's, DESI expects a year to be able to put a team together, test and pilot some curriculum, and then choose one, and then do professional development for teachers. So the goal is to have a new curriculum for ELA nine-to-12 by the beginning of January next year of 2024, but that's something that we really have to get going on, and so that's been something we've started working on already, and also you have to evaluate, especially secondary ELA, you have to really look at the books that are being read, whether they're culturally responsible, and, you know, so there's a lot of work to do there, but I'm very confident in the team of BEA members and administrators who are not BEA members to work together and kind of put something good in place and select and use the DESI curate process, so that's where we are. So this is, they'll review this agreement with us prior to November 1st. DESI will be at one of our March meetings to meet, to just talk to you about our progress and what they see from their end, because they've been doing, they do walkthroughs with our executive team or cabinet. They've done a lot of walkthroughs, and they'll be doing more. I've done walkthroughs with them at West, at Brockton High, and I have a couple more coming up, we have, so, and we meet, Sharon and I meet with our liaison every other Monday, and they also, then my team also meets with, the assistant superintendents meet with DESI, I think, almost weekly, so it's, you know, it's a pretty good partnership that hopefully the more progress we make, there'll be no need for an MOU going forward after this, so, but I thank DESI for their support and the time they've spent with us, and I want to thank Susan Burglin, who just retired, who was with the district as a liaison for close to eight years. She was very supportive, and I worked well with Susan. She just retired last month, so, you know, we have new leadership we're working with at DESI, but, you know, it's been, it's been a good partnership, but things are moving forward. But I want them to come and tell you from their end how they think, and they obviously are very honest, so it'd be good to have them here to talk to you about what they see from the district.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any questions, anything that Mike just shared with us?
Just a motion for, allow me to, as you can see, it's only been signed by Commissioner O'Reilly, so.
Yep.
I haven't signed, I have to, obviously.
Yeah, we would need, and it to attain a motion to allow the execution of the agreement from the superintendent of schools in his capacity.
Just one question.
Sure. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Sullivan.
The, the end date? You said November 23?
11, 11, 1, 23.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, it's right on, if you look at number 13 in the agreement, it's basically, yep, it's in bold. They will review this before, but this will end prior to, this will end on November 1st of 2023.
Just one comment, I was, congratulate you and your team for getting us out of this.
Well, I think it's all of us, I think it's you.
You did the work.
Yeah, and it's Ashley Kim and. Yeah, and it's Ashley, Kim, and BEA, and the executive team, the deputy superintendents, the assistants. I think it's them spending as much time as, I know they spend, they spend a lot of time with Desi in meetings, and they were really pleased with the outcome of the ELA, the choice for the new Wonders 2023 curriculum. They were really pleased with that. And I just think they see the work that's being done and the walkthroughs they see, and the instruction they've seen in the classroom with teachers, and then all we're doing with social emotional support as well, the EDI work. I just think it's part of the big difference from what we saw in the district review back when I started. So, thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
I'd like to make a motion, if I could.
Yes.
Motion to approve the Desi MOU as presented tonight.
To allow the superintendent to sign.
And to allow the superintendent to sign.
Yeah, he needs to execute in his capacity, superintendent, so. Is that, is that the form of a motion?
Yes, it is.
Is there a second, is a motion, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Mr. Sullivan, it's properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan. I'll just read the roll. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayliss?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well, that passes. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to bring up Deputy Superintendent Wolder to talk about the new proficiency commitment leadership teams, which exist in every school. And she'll explain what they are and the work they're doing to work towards 90% proficiency within the next five years, actually, four and a half years now. And she'll talk about what team, which the team, the training that the team did and the meeting we had with them last Thursday, I think, or Tuesday?
Tuesday.
I'm losing track of, yeah, so last Tuesday, and then the work they'll be doing in their individual schools. Thank you, Sharon.
Sure. And just for planning purposes, for the next meeting, we are going to come to you with some more information about the literacy work at the elementary and an update on the ELA Curriculum Steering Committee. Their first meeting was today, it was phenomenal, and it's exciting to see people who think it's fun to work on standards and curriculum, because they show up and they're committed to making changes in our district, which is really powerful. So, we'll come to you in March with more details about that. But for tonight, we're going to talk more about some of the work with, connected to our Department of Education partnership and some of the funding that we've been provided because of that partnership and the work we're doing with that funding. As we all know, at the beginning of this year, the superintendent made it very clear that our goal is 90% of our students will reach proficiency in the next five years. We are now down to four and a half years, and we are moving forward in the right direction. And part of that work is developing teams at each school so that everyone has a stake in the work, has a voice in the work, is committed to the work, paying attention to, each school can pay attention to their own progress toward it and recommendations to each other and how they're going to make some changes, and to the district, what is needed. And so, the targeted assistant grant that is funding this work came to us in the last few years. It went to specific schools who were identified as sustainable improvement schools in the past, and the district, this year, Desi has moved to district grants. And so, the grant came to the district, and it is to benefit every school in our district. And so, with some priority to those schools who were identified in the past. And so, we have used the funding that they provided us for our partnership with Cambiar, the Coaching Catalyst, and the Strategic Action Planning that is happening with Cambiar. Cambiar's been with us now for two or three years, working with us as part of, one of Desi's partners that they have connected us with. The Multilingual Learner Grant, Learners is the ESL consulting that we have. And then, the PBIS for the middle schools, they have some of the funding going there. And then, our proficiency commitment leadership teams is where we're at with this particular presentation. And we also will have a summer institute that we'll talk to you about later. But the grant allows for us to have a team at each school, and those, those teams are set to do some monitoring of their, their own data and support the efforts of their schools. They are to help propose some changes for what needs to happen in the schools and to really work with the district so that, across the board, we are working together as a district and not just each school doing its own thing. And it becomes impossible for a district to support schools when everyone is pulling in a different direction, needing different resources and doing different things. So, this gives us an opportunity to really focus our district. And we made an agreement, multiple agreements, and really, it is about trusting a process, a change process, and making sure that we are engaged in this work and we are moving together, honoring the confidentiality. Sometimes, we have to have some tough conversations with each other and have some ideas that come up, but just because it's a good idea doesn't mean it's being rolled out, and we don't want people panicking before it is clear what it is that we're actually doing. So, we made agreements with each other about how we're going to do the work and to be okay with the fact that things are changing and to trust that process. And so, we had an agenda. Originally, we had a different plan, and then Mike and I took the meeting over and said, we're going to lead this first meeting with the district. And so, we had 167 people on a call. Some were in their buildings, some were on the call, and we went forward with the plan that we had and said, remember, this is our goal. We said we were going to get our students to proficiency in the next five years. So, how are we doing it? And Mike reminded them of some of the things that they, he pointed out at our convocation, going back to our original message about the beliefs that we have, that our kids can do it, and so can we. And then, we said, let's focus on relationships, because we, we talk about effective instruction and active reading and writing, but we all know none of that happens without solid relationships. And so, we gave the school some time to really take a look at what they're doing in their schools that really helped to build those positive relationships so that they are able to do the other work. And then, we talked about how we're organizing ourselves. How are we going to make sure that our, our system is working as a system, very connected to each other, and making sure our communication is clear with our families, our community, and each other? And so, we outlined the structure that we're using for this work to be done. And we connected it to our prior, our district prioritizations, which are also tied to our strategic plan. And then, we went into, we keep saying that we want every student to reach proficiency in the next five years, so what does proficiency mean? And we worked with the definition that we used with the district administrators earlier in the school year and said, this is how we were defining it at that particular meeting. Solid academic performance for each subject area. Students reaching this level have demonstrated competency over challenging subject matter, including subject matter knowledge and application. So, we went back to what students know and are able to do. And we sent the teams back to their groups and said, now, work individually, and tell us, from this definition, is there anything missing? And they were very thoughtful about how they were thinking about what proficiency meant for their students, and some of the things that they came back with. Oh, and by the way, we also defined it for adults, because we talk about student proficiency, but as an adult who's leading students to that, what does that mean? So, we defined it for, for adults. We also defined proficiency for leaders. So, what does it mean to be a proficient leader? And we said, now, go back and take, say, take some time and figure out, what does this, what does it mean? What does it mean, what is it missing? And how can you continuously communicate this with, with your students' families and with each other? And so, some of the things that they came back and said right away in terms of the definition, what was missing? They wanted to see that we said that students were able to do independent work, so the knowledge and the skills application can be done independently, that they're able to communicate and advocate for themselves. And so, there were some other things that people were saying, can we make sure that our definition of proficiency consists of these other things? And so, as we moved through it, we said, but we have also said that equity is proficiency, but because to get our students to proficiency, all of them, then we have to look at things through an equitable lens. And so, what does that mean? And it means that we are not looking to change our population, we're changing the conditions under which they learn. And so, those conditions need to be different for different students based on what their needs are. And so, we kept saying, but remember, we create those conditions, and how do we get this done? And so, we talked about what it meant to be equity leaders and about how it's connected to belief systems and our personal responsibility to ensure that we are focused on the work, the social justice work of education. And then, we sent them back into their groups and said, now, take a, take a look at how things are going within your own settings. And so, does it, do they see evidence of equity within the schools? And what does it look like? Were they considering all students when they, when they responded to those questions? What data they were using to, to ensure that what they were thinking of is equity? Actually, the data shows that they're accurate. And then, looking at what they have in order to reach equity for all students, and what do they need? And then, we said, we have to take a look at how we decided this was important work for us to focus on. And we looked at our own student demographics, which you've all seen many times before, and this is what is reported to Desi at this point. So, here we are, these are our students in our system. And when we think about who came into our school system this year, how are they doing? And when we say there is equity or there's inequities we need to address to get students to proficiency, then we have to take a hard look at how, how they're doing. And so, we looked at last year's MCAS, and what we tend to show you is the data that shows the students who are meeting are partially meeting, and we said, we're going to take a look at it a little bit differently. We're going to look at the students who are not meeting. And so, what does our data tell us about the students who are not meeting? And this will help you understand why our MOU was so targeted on our multilingual learners and our students with disabilities. We have some real work to do there. And so, we call it out. It is the real work that we have to do, and we have to think of equity and make sure in every decision that we're making, we are very considerate about how our student groups are doing, and especially our students with disabilities and our multilingual learners. And so, then we said, let's make sure we remember that our demographics don't determine destiny. And so, a student may be identified in a specific group or population of students, but that should not determine their destiny. We have some power and some ability to change the outcomes for those students through the work that we're doing together. And so, what we're doing with data, how we're looking at it, and how we're using it to inform our decisions, is something that is in our control. And the last thing we looked at is what parents were saying to us. What do the parents want in terms of how their children are treated, how they're thought of, how they're taught? They were very clear that they want their children to be known, they want them to be respected, they want them to be loved, even when they're doing wrong. They want the teachers to have the supports that the teachers need in order to do the work on behalf of their children. And they want us to figure out how their children learn best and do our best to teach them that way. And we end it with what comes next, and we will meet with the group again with all of the 167 members of the proficiency commitment leadership teams. We will meet with them again on March 22nd. But within their schools, they will have a couple of meetings. We've already sent out a data protocol for them to look at their data within their schools and to come back ready to discuss some of that data and our work moving forward. And when we debriefed as a team, it was Karen who said how powerful it was to be in a meeting with teachers and administrators, 167 strong, all moving in the same direction for our kids. And she was right about that. It was, Mike and I couldn't tell how it was going, because we were back and forth and we couldn't see in the rooms, but they got to visit all of the rooms and to come back, and actually, to have Kim tell me that people thought the meeting really well. I'm like, okay, so, we were, we couldn't tell, but obviously, it is the right work, and people are committed to it, and that two hours flew by. And I think with this big team of people, we are going to continue to make some great changes for our students.
Thank you, Sharon. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Any questions at all?
Well, that was easy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to the team, too, that did, put, helped put the presentation together, and then, all the 160 people that actually signed up to do this. This is something that, you know, we put out an ad to look for people to do it and to get that many people to commit it to it, and especially after school hours, after a long day of teaching. So, the commitment shows that, how much people are really dedicated to getting the work done and supporting the work of 90% proficiency. Next is the first read of the district calendar, and this is just the calendar for the, the days off next year, the holidays, the vacations. There's a couple of things I wanted to point out as soon as I find it. Who do we, page, I wonder what page, I don't have the.
63.
63, wow, that's a lot of pages tonight. All right, so, just a couple of things to highlight. That school will start for all students in grades one to 12 on the 6th of September. Again, this is the proposed calendar. And then, if you note, this will be the first time we've done this. This, the 12th, September 12th, is a, it's primary, and it's a local city election. So, we are proposing for that day to be off for, obviously, all students and staff. So, we would not have school on the 12th. That's something new this year, because we have had school on the primary day. And we found, found out that two years ago, when we, oh, actually, a year and a half ago, when we, we had school, it was very busy. The parking lots were busy, especially when there's a local election. You know, because it's just when Brockton has their elections up, it's very busy. So, we've decided to take that, that day off. Pretty much, everything else falls in line for the regular holidays. The last day of school with no snow would be on the 18th. That's with no snow. And Brockton High and other graduations would take place on the 7th. Obviously, that's when we do the Champion and Huntington graduations, and then, we have Brockton High School on the 8th. So, that's pretty, this is the calendar, just again, for the days off and vacation days that show them 180 days. We'll be coming back at the end of March with a revised professional development calendar, which is the in-service days, which are the half-days for teacher, PD. You'll, you will see a reduced amount of half-days, especially at the elementary school level. Currently, we have 13, which we feel are too many for elementary and too hard for parents to have to plan that many early releases, which is pretty much almost every Thursday or every other Thursday. So, we are looking to cut down on the number of half-days for our elementary especially, and just make it much more efficient and much more friendly for parents that obviously have to find daycare in the afternoon. So, you will, we will present you with, we don't have the exact calendar yet, but we will present, it's the supplemental calendar, it's called, and we'll present that. But you will see a reduced half-day load at, at the elementary level especially. So, it's just to make it easier for parents, because 13 is just too many, too many. So, just the first read, we don't need a vote? Melinda, correct on the first? So, this, this calendar will come back to you first meeting of March to approve the, again, just the 180 days that students are in school.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. Azak.
It's okay, thank you. So, Superintendent, thank you, because I already see a couple of changes that we've, a lot of us brought to the school department's attention. I know I got a lot of complaints and a lot of, because we keep moving the first day of school, and a lot of parents want to be able to plan, so they were looking at the previous calendar, so it caused a lot of confusion. So, having it right after Labor Day, that one extra day does not make a huge difference. And it just, it gives parents, it gives the students an extra week, weekend, and so, that's, that's definitely a plus. And hopefully, we can try to. And hopefully, we can try to do that. Plus, it caused a lot of confusion with our first meeting because we've never gone back to school, I think, on a, we've had our, on a Friday. So this really does help. So I know a lot of parents are going to be happy with that. And then, I know I spoke with the Elections Commission, Cindy over in Elections. And we had a discussion. And my biggest concern, I've always brought it to the committee, is during Election Day, we're in session and we have people wandering our schools and we have those, I call them the vestibule, but it defeats the purpose when you have people coming into the school. So yes, it's on the 12th, but it's also safety for our students, you know, when you have so many people coming through an election. So she did mention, when it's a local election, she does have a little bit of control as far as the date. And as long as we let her know in January, when we do our calendar moving forward, they're able to work with us as far as a date to just make sure that we don't have school that day. So I know, you know, she wanted to, you know, discuss it further, but she just mentioned, just make sure in January. So if we can just calendar it in January, always touch base with the Elections Commission as we're approving this to make sure. Because we do run into parking issues. We run into, you know, you have elderly and you have people that are not able to get into the schools for the voting, especially if it's, if it's a, you know, pretty big primary. So I know a lot of people are going to be happy about that as well because that's a huge concern as well. Safety and getting access into the schools for those that are voting. So those are the two huge changes that I saw. And I want to thank the school department for making that decision with us.
Thank you.
Starting after Labor Day.
And just so we're clear, the regular Election Day in November is off for students, but it's a PD day for staff. The 12th, which is primary, is a day off for everyone, staff and students. That's not a PD day for staff.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Azak. Any additional comments or questions at this time?
Thank you, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor. And that, I think that, going back to the front page, that is the end of my report. Then the items to refer to.
Yeah, I was going to say, are there any matters to refer to Subcommittee at this time? No? Okay. We'll move on. Thank you again, Mike. We'll move on to Agenda Five, which is unfinished business, discussion and potential vote, appointments of Subcommittee for the 2023 calendar year. I do want to, I was in Washington, DC at the Mayor's Conference the last time we all met, so I do want to thank Kathy, the Vice Chair, for running the meeting. Matters before us right now? Ms. Azak, please.
Thank you. So since Mrs. Vivas-Mendez and Mr. Homer are not present, can, I'd like to request if we can move this to the next meeting. That way, we have the full committee here. I will be at a conference, but I will call in.
Okay.
If that's okay. But I believe I'm at a conference the next meeting. If it's the 28th, Mrs. Campbell? Is it the 28th or?
Yes.
Oh, first Tuesday in March?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So I am at a conference then, but if we can move that to that meeting, that would be great.
As a form of a motion?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to move discussion and potential vote, appointments of Subcommittee for the 2023 calendar year to March 2nd, I believe? 7th? Oh, 7th. I will be here if it's the 7th. Okay.
Melinda, is that the right date? 7? March 7? So motion on the floor, is there a second relative to that motion?
Second.
So motion on the floor is properly seconded to postpone Agenda Five in its entirety until the next time we meet, which is Tuesday, March 7th. I'll read the roll. Mrs. Sullivan?
No.
Mrs. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mrs. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
No.
And I say yes. So we're, okay. Take a two-minute recess, please. The last roll call vote was a three to three. So much like we've done in the past, I have to entertain another vote relative to this matter. A motion, well, that motion failed, so we would need to entertain another motion. Is there a motion on the floor again?
Motion to accept 2023 Subcommittee appointments as presented.
Second.
So, okay. The motion was made by Mrs. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mrs. Sullivan, to accept the matters as presented. We'll have to take a roll call on this again. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Quick question.
Is that on the motion?
Yes.
On the motion?
That was a tie vote.
Correct.
Shouldn't we go back again, besides before making another motion to change that?
That's what I was trying to say. The vote failed 3-3, so we'd have to entertain a new motion relative to that. So the motion should have been made, the exact same motion, but I can't tell the, I can't tell the School Committee what to do. There is a matter before us right now. We'll continue to read the roll. There was a yes, there was a no. Mr. Rodriguez?
That's not to approve, so that's a no.
A no?
No.
Ms. Azak?
No.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I vote no. So that matter fails. Is there a matter before us at this time, again, relative to the matter? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue for discussion on the March 7th meeting. The discussion and potential vote for appointment of Subcommittees for the 2023 calendar year.
So motion, form of motion, is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Azak, properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. The purpose of this motion is to continue it until the next time we meet, which would be March 7th. At that time, the expectation is we'll have a full member, Jared being here and Cynthia being here. I'll read the roll at this time. Mrs. Sullivan?
No.
Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
No.
I vote yes. It will be postponed until the date of March 7th, at being 7:00 PM at that time. And we'll put that on the minutes to reflect that. Continue to move on at this time. Are there any other matters relative to that? Because again, I wasn't here at that time. Any other unfinished business that are before us tonight? I don't believe so. We'll move on to number six, which is new business. And there's two matters there. There's the School Committee approval of Certified Negotiations Bargaining Member Disclosure, which is, I'm sorry, and the next one is discussion and potential vote of the Security, Safety, Transportation Subcommittee Meeting dated January 31 of '23. Those matters are before us now. Ms. Azak?
I'd like to give a report on the Safety, Traffic and Transportation Subcommittee. We met on Tuesday, January 31st, and we had Dr. Murray present as far as the transportation part. He went over different things that we have going on right now. So right now, we have seven handicapped buses. We have five 7D vehicles. Those are the vans. We have 59 vans, and then we have 61 large buses. We're looking to add this coming, by this coming fall, add more to our fleet, especially if we're looking at some of the pre-K down the road. Dr. Murray also mentioned that, you know, things are a little different communication-wise. It's a lot easier having our transportation in-house, communication with our schools, communication with our bus drivers. So things, knock on wood, are moving smoothly. Again, it was a learning process our first year. You know, so this year was a lot different and we're tweaking a lot of things. You know, he went over some of the updates and things like that that we have. Then we had, because we will be looking for a motion, so we had Lieutenant Maker and Sergeant Livingston also present as far as the safety. So they went over some of the Alice training and things that we're implementing as far as training for our staff and school-wise. They also mentioned, because I know we, a few of us have served on the police negotiations, we have some amazing police officers that come into our school to work with us. And it's just, you know, Superintendent can chime in, but we, given the, I think, retirement plan, it's just we lose so many amazing officers and we're doing the best that we can to try to hold on to them. So that's going to be another aspect that we're going to try to, you know, speak with our, I believe it was our state reps and senators and things like that, to work with us as far as like their retirement plans. And then, so we are looking, so they came before us and mentioned that maybe having the written exam, trying to do something a little different. So they asked us if we could, and I can do the motion a little later. I know Sergeant Livingston's here.
And Lieutenant Maker.
Oh, Lieutenant Maker, sorry. There's the light right above you. If you wanted him to mention anything, but it's just, it's really important because we rush to get this on the agenda for tonight. So it will give them the opportunity to get it on, get everything going, to possibly do this, I think, by March or April.
So it's not, like, obviously, we can't do a civil service exam because we don't fall under civil service. It would be, we did this about, Lieutenant Mills was with us about 10 years ago. It's basically the same test that they'll give to like a campus police officer. 50 questions? 50 questions. It's administered.
Guy's mind coming down here. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Sergeant.
It's administered by a private company, tested by a private company that do this for campus police all over. And then, basically.
Fine, why don't you sit there? Mike, grab just one of the empty seats. Absolutely. Thank you.
And then they would then grade it and then give the, a list, top to bottom, of the best scores to the lowest scores. And then, from that list, there'd be an interview team to interview the candidates. And then that would have to go through whoever, whatever candidates are recommended. So usually, if you have five openings, they always send like 10 people to background checks. And then, then obviously, there's, once they go through the test, then there's a long process of hiring, which is the interview, then the background checks, and then, obviously, then they can go to Academy, which usually takes us two or three months to get a spot. And so I think Lieutenant Maker can explain. He spent a lot of time researching the exam, so he can actually be more detailed about the exam than I can.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Good evening, everyone. So as the Subcommittee, we met last week. We're trying to get back into a written-based exam for the hiring purposes to be in line with the DOC, the police departments, and the fire departments. We have a third-party entity handling consulting that will create the exam, proctify the exam, and give the exam. They'll give us a list of potential candidates. At that point, depending on how many police officers we depend to hire, BPD will do backgrounds on those, and then we'll have interviews. So it's going from a non-test, which we do now, to a written exam to get a list of potential candidates. That's basically what we're looking for, to get approval from the body tonight from.
Lieutenant, are there any other school districts that have school police officers that follow this type of process that you're aware of in the Commonwealth?
I believe we are only, the only school district in the Commonwealth that have school police.
Yeah, we're the only ones that have sworn.
Because Boston got rid of them?
Yes.
Okay.
And Boston's were always employed by
Right.
the police department.
Right.
They're employed by us. So, but every, like a Bridgewater State, Stone Hill.
That's how they do it?
They all, yep.
Ms. Azak?
And Lieutenant Maker, I believe, is it 1,600? Was the cost of?
Correct. The base fee is $1,600 because the district wanted to pick up the fee for the, for the people signing up for the exam. So it'd be $1,600, flat fee. Any applicant over the number 30, more than 30 applicants, would be a $10 fee. And that includes everything, creating the exam, grading the exam, and proctoring the exam at Brockton High School on a sad day sometime in March, if it's approved by the body.
Thank you, Lieutenant Sergeant.
I think it's a wonderful idea and proposal. We're just waiting for the approval of this body so we can get this done.
Thank you. Any questions to the membership? Ms. Azak?
Sorry, I just, I don't have my notes with me. Because this will allow us to add more police officers because we need more officers on the School Committee. And I know Mr. Petronio had run over some of the numbers. Like, we have, we have room to add more police officers. So this will help us get more of our officers on our force, well, with the school police.
Any further questions or any additional questions or comments at this time? Mr. Rodriguez, please.
Being a civil service employee, I mean, this just makes sense to have this type of process, to take an exam, because any law enforcement or public safety job that you take from the state level to the federal level, you have to take a written exam. You know, step one and then step two is, you know, they have physical, but I believe we're not doing a physical eligibility test as well. I don't know if you want to.
We will not, we will not do that. Whoever gets appointed to as a police officer, and if they're not MPTC-trained, will have to go through the physical fitness part of the Academy.
So this process is, I mean, it should be done instead of just having an open application process. So, and then also, when it comes to us as elected officials, you know, knowing that, you know, we do lose a lot of our school police officers, I think. As elected officials, we do need to lobby our state representatives and making sure that these men and women that bear the uniform do get that benefit when it comes to their retirement in Group Four, because that's very important. So that's very key with this school police department not having that.
Any additional comments? And if not, I'll entertain a motion relative to this matter. Is there a motion?
Sure. I can make the motion. The motion is to approve BPS's HR department in conjunction with BPS's school police leadership to approve written police exam for new applicants.
It's a form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Ms. Azak, properly seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. I'll read the roll. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
And Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well. So it passes unanimous. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Sergeant.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Members of the School Committee, we do have, we have to take another vote. We do this every single year. So Superintendent does an annual disclosure. Again, the attached disclosure is being presented for School Committee approval of Superintendent Mike Thomas, participation of the, as a member of the Certified Negotiating Team for Brockton Public Schools. Mr. Superintendent, do you want to opine on it in any reason?
Yeah, just that this, I have to disclose when, anytime that I sit with the BEA in bargain, either MOU or a certified negotiation, even though the, if the new contract is signed by the School Committee and not by me, I still have to disclose I'm part of the negotiation. And obviously, my wife is a BEA member, so this disclosure has to be done every year.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Again, this is under Master General Act 268A, Section 19. And again, he is stating his wife is a current member of the BEA, and she has a financial interest in the outcome of negotiations. I want to applaud him. I know he does this every single year and, you know, it's something by law we need to do. And as a committee, we need to acknowledge the fact that he's doing that. We need to accept it from a formal vote. Is there a motion to accept that as stated?
Motion to approve Superintendent Thomas to be part of the Certified Negotiations Bargaining Member Unit.
Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Is there a second on that?
Second.
It was a motion made by Mrs. Sullivan, properly seconded by Mr. Sullivan. Let me read the roll. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I say yes as well. So that passes unanimous. Are there any other matters before us from members of the School Committee? Some say this is the best part of my job. Yeah, some say it's the best part. Again, there's a motion on the floor, it was properly seconded, it was made by Mrs. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Azak. I'll read the roll again. Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ayers?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Azak?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
And I'm a yes as well.